My allergies killing me today.
I don't have allergies, this stuff don't bother me.
I didn't until I was thirty-five, a couple of years ago.
That's me too.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of June eighth. I would like to start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is review of items for consent. With that, we have the minutes of May eighteenth, accounts payable manifest of four hundred twenty-one thousand eighty-four dollars and six cents, payroll manifest, the abatement for map twelve lot thirty-three, and the abatement for map four lot sixty-seven, confirmation to DRA that taxpayer inventory blank, PA twenty-eight, will not be used, and unlicensed dog warrant. Do I have any items on consent that anybody wishes to remove?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the items of consent.
I second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Lemire, second by Mr. Brunel. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained. Motion carries five zero zero. Next. Any other business? Anybody have any items for other business? Hearing none. We will skip over public input, which will occur after six-thirty, and we'll go into the administrator report. Jason, would you like to start with the new business?
Sure. Health trust agreement. Health trust, who we still purchase dental insurance from, has sent revised membership agreements. The updates are basically cleaning up some of the old references to LGC and clarifies the right to surplus. It's unchanged from sort of past practice, but better explained. There are also related agreements for Cobra and retiree billing. Again, we use both of those services, if appropriate, for dental insurance, for people taking dental insurance. So there is a resolution in here, which is the attachment that's called, I think, auth.pdf would be the most logical, looking, and so I would be looking for the board's authorization for me to execute the appropriate agreements with Health Trust.
Anyone?
Yep, I'll make a motion to authorize Jason Hope as town administrator to act on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for Health Trust.
I have a question. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Brunel, and we have a second by Mr. Byron. Mr. Byron?
Yes, you have a resolution that needs to be made, right?
Yes, I would, it would be better if we had the motion be the resolution.
And, and that is on, you've got like eight documents listed here. I just opened the agreement, I didn't see it there.
It's the one that's called A U T H dot PDF, that's the authorization.
It could have stopped me in midstream, and I would have just done that.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion to the following. Resolved that the town of Litchfield shall participate as a member of the Health Trust pulled risk management program for the provision of group medical and/or other benefit plans in accordance with applicable, excuse me, accordance with the application and membership agreement in New Hampshire RSA five B. And it's also resolved that Jason Hope is hereby authorized and dictated to execute and deliver to Health Trust on behalf of the town of Litchfield the application and membership agreement in substantially the form presented at this meeting, and further resolve that Jason Hope is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to Health Trust a certificate of this resolution, so help be God.
Ei ei.
That's not on there.
All right, so we have an amendment.
I can, I can second, right? Second.
By Mr. Byron, second by Mr. Brunel, and good luck with getting that.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Word for word.
Mr. Byron, he'll put it, he'll give it to you.
She has access to the documents on the site.
It's exhibit A.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, all those abstained. Motion carries five zero zero.
Awesome, thank you.
Next.
Next.
Well, that was the amendment, now you've got to.
Oh, whoa, 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 my bad.
I was just gonna say.
Good thing you're here, you caught me. Now the amendment is passed, now we have to vote on the amended main motion. Any discussion on the amended main motion? So I'll call that to a vote. All those in favor of the amended main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained. Motion carries five zero zero. Now, we're all set. Unless Frank has something else. Did I miss anything else? Next.
Okay, next is from, shared from the chief of police on the COP Sync program. Pretty small grant, actually. It's now four hundred and eighty dollars from emergency management performance grant monies. This allows the police department to receive real-time texts from schools in case of emergency. A teacher, faculty member could make an alert. Alert would activate, immediately activate in the five nearest cruisers and at dispatch, have a live chat with the reporting party, so anybody, any officer responding can respond more efficiently. Chief noted, we were putting this together a couple of weeks ago, there was an issue at the school a couple of weeks ago where we had a fire reported, and so this notification would have worked smoothly. Currently, the SAU has not adopted it for implementation in Litchfield schools. However, Londonderry and Merrimack have, and it appears to be the next direction in interactive policing. The SAU is committed to looking into the prospect of joining in the future. So on our end, we saw that this small amount was available now through the end of September, and it would be wise for us to get our part in place, you know, until, so at some point when the school decides. I included a small video, if you had a chance to watch, that sort of shows how the communications work. This is another one where we are looking for the acceptance of the EMPG grant agreement and the terms as presented. And the grant, goodness gracious, it's somewhere in here.
Does there have to be a public hearing, no?
No, we can just do it at this.
Okay.
This, and the, the amount here is a, good God. Let's see, it's the four, oh, here we go. It is the, it is a nine hundred and sixty-dollar project. If you're looking at the attachment, you want to look at page three? Page four. So it'd be Litchfield Board of Selectmen, majority vote, accept the terms of the emergency management performance agreement as presented, the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars for the purchase of COP Sync. Furthermore, the board acknowledges the total cost of this, let me rephrase that, the grant and the amount of four hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of COP Sync. Furthermore, the board acknowledges the total cost of this project will be nine hundred and sixty dollars, in which the board will be responsible for a fifty percent match, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Mr. Chairman? I will move that motion, and I would like to comment under discussion.
Okay. I have a motion by, nope.
Nope, that's good. Can I just get you to amend your motion to authorize me to sign all appropriate documents on behalf of the board?
So, moved.
Okay.
And it will be the main motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Lemire, second by Mr. Brock. Discussion?
This program in previous town that I served in, they adopted this last year, and they purchased the equipment, and they had a very smooth transition and an excellent interface with the school district. And I would urge our SAU to adopt this as soon as practicable, because it certainly, in the time that we're in, time is of the essence in, in any situation, but especially in a school. And this system allows for the, like it says, the closest five cruisers, regardless of what municipality they're in, if you're participating in the COP Sync program, they would respond to a situation in our town and at the school. And I'd like to think the SAU would see the value of this and to hop on board rather quickly, because I think it's an outstanding program, and there are several municipalities that have done this. And, you know, simply a teacher in the classroom can pull out his or her phone and text a situation, and bang, it goes out immediately. And I firmly believe that this, this system may eliminate confusion or go a long way to eliminate confusion, and also provide for rapid response in situations that need to be handled.
Okay, any other discussion?
Are we intending to use the language provided here for this grant?
I think, I believe we have to, don't we?
Well, this particular language is saying it should be used in the meeting minutes.
Yeah, and, and that was, that was what I had been reading, that, that, that was the language I was reading. That was the part on page four, and that was also why I asked for, to make sure that the authority for me to sign was also provided. So I think we have jumped through all of their necessary hoops.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because they're, they're calling for a bunch of information to be clearly understood by the board.
Right. And, and, and those are the pieces that I went back and repeated again, that the grant was four hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of the COP Sync software. The board acknowledges the total cost of this project is nine hundred and sixty dollars, for which the town will be responsible for a fifty percent match, four hundred and eighty dollars.
So what happens in the case that we go ahead and vote this tonight, and the school decides they don't want to do this?
We will, we will be prepared, we will have the, we will have, have it installed. This is not contingent on our school district participating immediately. It would be preferable if our school district does participate. We, as, as the chief's note said, right now, several of our neighboring towns, who we go, you know, are are at least, you know, on call for mutual aid, have it. So this is our time, and, and the, the funding agency knows that our schools have not gotten to it yet. So in our case, it's just the opportunity to get something for half price right now and get it installed.
I believe the fire chief was meeting with the school district on this Tuesday?
It may not have been this, and they have been.
Or last week, I think.
It was related to the.
It was, oh, I'm sorry, it was Friday.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm like to think that, that they were able to reach a consensus and come on board.
And, and I know COP Sync has reached out to the SAU a couple of times. I think unfortunately in the fall, it was at the wrong attention span time for budget, so I think, would hope that they would go back to it now. And I think it's something that our department feels is important, so hopefully us having it in place will.
At least we'd be able to respond as part of the group.
Yeah.
I think it's outstanding program.
Any further discussion? All right.
I'm just looking up one thing. Says here that we have to ensure that we comply with thirty-one ninety-five B.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, and, and we're under the threshold for this grant, because it's only four hundred and eighty dollars, it's.
Just gonna say something else too. This thing, this, this system integrates with the PD-RMS system. Knowing the vendor we have, there may be additional costs even connected into it. So I don't know if anyone has reached out to that vendor. I could do that tomorrow and find out what they know. Knowing Londonderry uses it, they are the same vendor, they probably, you know, I'll, I'll find out, but just realize that that may not be the only cost.
Okay.
What did you anticipate with the?
With these guys, it's, no idea. Could be no thousand dollars, could be fifty bucks. They usually have these third-party connectors, and it's something I didn't consider, so.
Should we wait then before approving this until the next?
I don't think it changes the grant outcome, doesn't.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of if we're gonna bolt it in, we may have to, there may be an additional cost.
Right, but if the additional cost was ten thousand dollars, and we have a school system that doesn't want to use this system, it may be beyond our scope of what we want to do.
This will provide a notification regardless of its connection to that software. It will be preferable if it connects to that software.
Right, but the discussion that we, the discussion that we had with regards to the other discussion, with the other event, was texting people's phones, nobody wants that, because they're maybe off-duty or under, because it's not, it's not schedule-based, it's just broadcast-based.
Okay.
Well, that raises a big question.
Well, I mean, if we can, I mean, if we need to defer it, we'll defer it. I think we're probably making a larger issue out of something that's not an issue, but I can't definitively tell you that.
Right, and I can't either, but I know that, that what, like John said, it doesn't affect the grant, and certainly if we found it to be prohibitive at some point in time, I'd rather apply for the grant.
Yeah, but we have till September thirtieth.
Right. That was my question was gonna be, by delaying, are we jeopardizing the grant? Or are we creating a situation where the parameters of the grant would change?
Uh, but it, it shouldn't be, no, because it's eligible and it's, and it's funded. So we just need to get this executed by the end of September. And its effective date is business office approval, because it's a small amount, so it doesn't appear that it has to go to governor and council. So I am, I am expecting that if you would be more comfortable answering the IMC question, then we can wait two weeks. There's nothing here that this is.
I can get that answered tomorrow. It's just, and I, there is, there is notice that they are integrated. The question is, is it part of our module, or is this an additional?
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to throw a wrench into it.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
I've already addressed this issue, because we're trying to look, trying to do it to Hudson, and we already ran the same problem.
Right. I guess my other sense is that if it requires, if it requires additional funds for IMC, that that would have been part of the original request for the funding. Because if it's a, if it's an add-on on top of it, that should be part of the original funding request, so.
Not necessarily.
And, the, the, all parties involved with this understand how police departments work and what systems they have. So I would be surprised, but we'll defer it. That's fine.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so.
Yes, there is. Would you like to withdraw your motion? Or would you like me to call the vote?
I understand thoughts of my fellow board members, and I wouldn't mind if you wanted to put a contingent upon but if you're more comfortable deferring it to next meeting, then I will withdraw my motion for this meeting.
And you second?
I will draw my second as well.
Perfect. Let's move this to the next meeting.
And then next amendment, nevermind.
Wow.
What was that?
Tough night tonight.
I've been getting it all day today.
Come on.
Charlie, you can handle it.
You did it, you did it to yourself.
Man.
Keep with me.
Keep coming.
All right, can we move on to a tax-deeded property? You have.
That big folder right there?
That's, yeah, I think that's in your action folder. There are three properties that were on the list that Tax Collector reviewed with you last time. I think she went through what had been a longer list at that point. Today, the, the notification for deeding, and just to remember that this is unpaid bills from three years ago, a balance today. They notices went out that in end of April, that payment had to be received by three P.M. today. As of three P.M. today, I have three properties that have not paid, have not made a payment plan with the Tax Collector, because that's the other thing that we would always look for. If there's a credible payment plan, the last thing you want to do is take property. So we have three. You have the deeds, the deeds for signature in the files. Behind all of those, two of these are definitely occupied. One is not occupied. We, but for, practically, we don't officially know that it's unoccupied, so we're gonna, we're doing all of the eviction paperwork. So you, what you have teed up is a deed to sign, you have a notice of eviction, and the notice of eviction gives slightly more than thirty days. Just, I took it to the end of the week in July, so it's like July tenth, the Friday on those. I've put with them as well a notice of our intent to sell. Remember that when we sell, we have to give notice at least ninety days before sale that explains to the now-previous owners what their, what, what their process to obtain the property back is, and that's, you know, and within thirty days, they can tell us, yes, I want my property back, and they will be responsible for paying all back taxes, fees, and penalties. So that's basically, in most cases, three years' worth of taxes, penalties, and fees. And again, also the penalty, the fifteen percent penalty, and the fifteen percent penalty is based on the assessed value of the property. That's, you know, you recall, we had those discussions last year about, you know, optional, whether you chose to exercise that option. We do know in two of these properties, they're both mobile homes. We've spoken to the park owner. Park owner is willing to work with us, assuming that the current owners do not execute their right to repurchase. He would be interested in purchasing from them from us at the cost of back taxes and not charge last lot rent in the interim. So I think that my notice of sale has referred to that type of disposition for those. The third property is a larger property. That property, my notice on that one states that our disposition will be by auction, because that, that is the probably best return for that property. That property owner, we heard from after the deadline today. I expect you may have a request at your next meeting to have that person meet with you to discuss options and penalty and the like. But as of now, the answer is consistent with everybody else. Payments weren't made at three. Tax Collector has the deed for you. Should probably, for, so we actually have this in our record as well. The properties are map one, lot fifty-three, map one, lot seventy-five, and map twenty, lot thirteen.
Any questions, Thomas?
You didn't need a motion. I just gotta sign the paperwork.
You need a motion.
Um, you should, you should, you should do a motion, you should do a motion to accept the deeds from the Tax Collector for map, map one, lot fifty-three, map one, lot seventy-five, map twenty, lot thirteen.
What if we don't? They're already deeded.
Yeah, well.
They didn't take an action of the board to deed them.
I mean, she's given them to you, then they hang out in an uncomfortable, megalimbo, because she gives them to you, they're off of her hands, you either sign a deed or you sign a waiver to not take.
Chairman, I'll, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen affirm the action of the Tax Collector in deeding these properties. Number one is map twenty, lot thirteen. Number two is map one, lot fifty-three. And number three is map one, lot seventy-five.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lemire, second by Mr. Brunel. Do we have discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to amend. Motion to amend is that the town will not collect the additional fifteen percent penalty assessed on these properties.
I have an amendment to the motion, do I have a second to the amendment? Do I have a second to the amendment? Amendment fails due to lack of second. Do we have any further comment?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's reprehensible by the Board of Selectmen that they would take an additional fifteen percent from these individuals, simply based upon the fact that you can penalize these people. All of the expenses and back taxes will have been paid. All of the expenses in terms of administrative cost will be paid. All of the expenses in terms of town employees having to deal with this property will be paid, and there is no need to take that additional fifteen percent. Fifteen percent represents the town basically trying to feather its coffers with additional money that it does not really need.
Mr. Chairman, are we allowed to do this by state law?
Yep.
Have we done it in the past?
Yes, we did it last year.
I know if I'm late for a bill, I get whacked with quite a bit of interest charges. I, until the state is willing to come down and make a broad-brush law that prohibits it, I think that we should continue doing what most of the other towns do and collect the interest. The people that are involved are well aware of the situation, and I, I understand there may be mitigating circumstances, but to me, it's not fair to all the rest of the taxpayers who consistently pay their tax bills and their bills. And like I said, until the state, the broad brush prohibits the procedure, I think we should follow our procedures that we have been doing right along.
So, I'm, I'm stuck in the middle, because the fifteen percent, which is above the assessed value, is what, to me, is excessive. Just feels excessive. And in the charge, in the, in the balance of the taxes owed, there are interest penalties are in there. There is penalty fees, as small as they are, they're there.
Eighteen percent.
Wow.
That's not a.
No, eighteen, it's not eighteen percent, well, when I saw one.
It is eighteen percent.
Out of the two.
Mr. Hope?
Yeah, it's eighteen, all right.
So maybe, maybe that sheet doesn't really, is it filled out right? Because it didn't feel like there was eighteen percent penalty, and I didn't see a penalty charge every year.
No, 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 that, that's interest.
I'm using one example.
That, that's interest. Penalty are purely, what we call penalty are our notice costs for lean research and all that.
Eighteen percent, okay, so eighteen percent is the interest.
Is the interest.
I, again, I.
I, I guess, I guess, one way I'd say, I think you're having somewhat of an academic argument here. I'm, I'm pretty sure in two of these properties, in any one of these properties, you will get, if you get a request for repurchase, you then can entertain the individual circumstances of that case of, because the fifteen is only triggered on a repurchase by somebody who has not paid their tax bill and has not entered into any payment agreement and has lost their property accordingly.
And that's three years.
And that's, and that's, and, right, it's three years that they have not paid their taxes. State law, state law allows that provision. Disappointment with, with what's allowed by state law should be fixed at the legislature.
Correct.
You, you guys have the, now, if you feel individual circumstances are different, You guys have the now, if you feel individual circumstances are different, then when you get the request for repurchase, I think then consider the individual circumstances and feel if deviation from practice in an individual case makes sense.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We're allowed to individually, per situation, if.
You may feel there's a circumstance.
We can handle, but to do it just with a broad brush, I'm not. Not interested in that.
I'm more than willing to make three separate motions to remove the fifteen percent.
You're not being asked to consider fifteen percent for any of these tonight. I have no indication that any of these people.
Mr. Hope, you stated that this included the fifteen percent. That's why I made the motion.
No, I said a repurchase would include the fifteen percent. There's no fifteen percent in here. You don't act on the fifteen percent now.
The sale, the sale includes the fifteen percent that the town would take, right?
If the the repurchase by the individual includes the fifteen percent.
Or the sale of the property.
Uh, the 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 sale could also include the fifteen percent.
When we did this last year, well, the house we we took two years ago, whatever it was.
We had this same vigorous discussion about the fifteen percent then.
Did we waive it at that time?
We originally did, and then I was absent for a meeting, so it was changed.
We in the in the end, the board voted to charge the fifteen percent.
I, as you say, Brent, individual comes in front of us and asks us, that's a different situation. You're not asking us to make that decision tonight.
No. You're making the decision tonight.
No, we made.
As to whether you're going ahead, when this property goes to deed and goes to sale, whether that fifteen percent will be collected.
This property has already been deeded.
It's already been deeded, yeah.
When you sign that form, you own it tonight.
Yeah.
We we are not guaranteeing any form of disposition of that property yet. We are giving notice to the current property owners that our intention is to try to sell it, either by agreement with the park owner or by auction at some point ninety days in the future.
So what you're telling us, then, Mr. Hope, is that there will be another vote on what the parameters of the sale of the property will be, is that correct?
Yeah, at some point, you're going to have to set in an auction.
Last time.
Yes, it did.
In an auction.
No, it didn't.
Yes, it did. Because the meeting that you made the motion that passed, and then the meeting that you missed, was when it was overturned, and then it was the meeting after that that you were back for, that that's when we came back with the final terms and voted on it, and you voted against it. Because that fee was in there.
Okay. So the inclusion of the fifteen percent, one way or the other, is going to be something that you will see in whatever agreement we put together with if any of these property owners come back first within their thirty days. They have first crack under state law. We're doing nothing. They come back, they say, it's it's my interest to buy it. If they ask for a waiver of that fifteen percent, then it's the board's decision at that point what to do with that. They set a price within fifteen days of them giving us notice of of purchase and us reaching an agreement, they pay us. If that works out, they get the property back. If we don't hear from them at the end of thirty days, then we set the wheels in motion to sell in whatever form we've determined, at least sixty days after the end of that thirty days, so ninety days, but more or less ninety days from now. Now, when you, if you reach an agreement with the park owner, the components of what will you sell that for include the back taxes and and the fifteen percent or not the fifteen percent. If you set a minimum bid at the auction, you include that. I mean, I think that, you know, the other question, I think this is where the where the confusion came up last time, too, is remember that if you sell a property for more than you are owed in back taxes, the balance returns to the previous owner. And the question that this board was dealing with last year was sort of the after-the-fact disposition of the balance of the funds after our fees were paid, after the taxes and associated costs of our care and upkeep were covered. And that was where you had that fifteen percent. I don't think we sat down really at the beginning and set a minimum bid. I think we were comfortable that because our taxes and the fifteen percent together, the property would go for more than that.
Okay. So I'd like to amend the motion to state that further vote on the parameters of the sale of these properties will be held by the Board of Selectmen before determination of will be held before further action is taken. I'll leave it at that.
Doesn't it have to happen anyway?
Yes.
Yeah. It's going to happen anyway. Because they have to come before the.
So then there shouldn't be no problem seconding the motion to amend.
I'll second the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? They have to be revoted anyway individually, don't they?
What?
When they go to sale or repurchase.
Yeah, I mean, because I'll have a purchase for at least, you know, assuming that nobody comes back, then we have a auction agreement for one and a purchase and sale for the other two. So you obviously have to vote those. You're not, you can't just will that away now, so.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye. Aye.
All those abstain? The amendment passes four, one, zero. Any further discussion on the amended main motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amended main motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Okay. Now that's done.
Do you have those in the folders?
There we have it signed.
Old business, Jason?
I got a couple things you want to pause for public comment?
Yeah, six is now six forty. I'll open the ti- the floor to public comment. We're not going to get a lot.
Probably not.
Anyone? Anyone? Anyone?
Bueller?
Seeing no public, I will close public comment, and we will now move on to old business. Jason?
Old business. Pipeline Coalition continues to meet. I did miss a meeting while I was on vacation. The group is working on coordinating some additional background information with the likely council that they've chosen. As I've shared with you last time, I'm waiting to see a final agreement with council that the group will be proceeding with. The other notable things there, I think a note has been shared about an interstate pipeline meeting for government officials in June twenty, June twenty-second, which has a bit of a conflict with your next meeting. I think that then that's in Draket. One of the things that came up in the municipal coalition was discussion about having FERC to try to host more scoping sessions. Mayor Mack's been encouraging residents to use a template that they provided to request scoping session in their town. So this will be something I'll be putting up on our website as well. You'll recall, our letter to FERC asked for a scoping session here. As of last week, our contact at Senator Shaheen's office said that they had not heard back from FERC regarding the letter the delegation sent asking for scoping sessions in each town. So that appears that that's still somewhat of an open question. This may have been late posting before, but there was some good information municipal association sent along last month that I did include as well. So I expect for next meeting, I'll have that dock that agreement for you as well as whatever else we may come up in the interim.
Okay.
Fireworks. I believe we all received a letter the end of May expressing concerns about fireworks. We've had this conversation a couple times, and one, I wanted to see how and what form the reference of response to this email is and what direction, if any, the board would like to go.
Everybody get a chance to read the letter?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
What's everybody think?
I did not see anything on the letter concerning calls to the police or anything like that. Maybe I missed it, but.
There wasn't anything, not that I saw.
And I'm not sure who the Litchfield Firearms or Litchfield Citizens Against Firearms Coalition is.
Fireworks.
Fireworks or what have you.
Oh, geez, don't call it Citizens Against Firearms. You'll inflame a whole bunch of other people.
Sorry, I was just reading your lapel pin.
Oh.
That, but I I don't know if it's one person, two people, or a hundred people. I have no idea. I think that we backed off on this, I think, last time this came up. We were originally going to go forward with a or an article, if I remember it, and then we decided not to do that because there is sufficient authority that the police have in terms of, call it disturbing the peace. I would suggest that somebody needs to get back to the person. That's why I asked it to be put on the agenda, just so that they can be clearly told what their options are in terms of trying to get their peace and quiet. I sympathize with them, but, you know, if they're not calling the the police about it, then.
They are.
Yeah.
If you look at the journal, the journal, they have a journal.
Yeah. They have a what?
They have a log that they keep, and it says that cops were notified.
Were they? Okay. I said I didn't see it, so.
Yeah, and based on the log, it 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 sounds, it looks like it was potentially the same group of people from last year. Not that it makes any difference, but.
I think as much as people have the right to their peace, people have the right to use fireworks.
They're legal.
It is legal in in the state.
Mr. Chairman? Years ago, when I was serving as fire chief, the, I'm talking a while ago, there was a move at the legislature to ban them, not unlike what other states do. The fireworks lobby was very effective at that time. Fire chiefs got together and were adamantly opposed. We we supported banning them because we had had several injuries, and and three of them were in this town over a period of of time. And the fire service supported banning them, but at that time, the legislature, in their wisdom, did not support our efforts. And hence fireworks are are legal in the state of New Hampshire, subject to certain restrictions. So at that point, they they I I don't know where it stands now, to be honest with you, but at that point, they said it's a local option, go back and and talk to your town. As much as I am against them, I am of the opinion that here's another area where the legislature can be of service to the towns if, rather than putting the towns in a position to have to ban them on their own. I would like to think, I certainly agree with some of the information that this group has presented, but I'd like to think their efforts would be better served in approaching the legislature to assist us in this effort, not unlike what they've done in other states. And if that is successful, then it would make it a lot easier for the towns, for the municipalities, to to go ahead and enact, you know, supporting legislation. But until that happens, I think that, you know, we have two sides of, two schools of thought, and it's very difficult, from this angle, even from my background, to be able to come in and say, oh, yeah, you know, let's ban them. Well, there are people who are not supporting this, and they may have as many valid reasons on their side as that they think than as these people do. So I'd like to think the efforts at the legislature would be affected, be more effective than at the town level.
Anybody else have any comment?
Having some knowledge of the status of this, of the legislature, it'll probably be a long time before they would get banned.
Yes, right.
Secondarily, I can tell you that currently, the Fire Marshal for the state of New Hampshire, who I've had the pleasure of attending a subcommittee meeting specifically on this subject, of which I chaired it, has the authority to ban any fireworks he wants. So it can happen at any time. And lastly, if we want to do something about it as a selectman, we have the right to do that, and it doesn't take the legislature to do anything. We can ban them in town tod- tonight, or actually, not tonight, probably, but after prior notice of a hearing on it.
The only other, I guess I would observe, I mean, we've been down this road a couple years in a row, and we've been down it different ways. We've looked at bans, we've looked at warrant articles, we've looked at permits. I have a whole array of different things we've looked at. I think ultimately, the sense was that none of them were the right fit. And I think part of the reason we keep getting concerns back is that while a decent number of people are responsible, good neighbors, there's a small percentage of people who choose not to be good neighbors, and that sort of ongoing irritant is what causes a problem for some people. I think ultimately, that's that's the issue. I mean, ideally, if you can have neighbors talking to neighbors or people saying, okay, you know, or having kind of the self-discipline to say, okay, maybe maybe enough's enough here, you know? Maybe maybe eleven o'clock's a good time to stop tonight. And, you know, because in in the absence of people being good neighbors, you know, they come to us, and we try to find something that fits, and as we've seen, we don't have a good fit. So nor has there been an interest in arguably trying to find something that would hurt the interest of that ninety percent because of the ten percent who can't be good neighbors. So.
What would the board like to do with this?
Ultimately, I have to respond to it, but.
Should we? I don't know. What about a public hearing? What about a community session, work session?
Didn't we do that last year?
Of course, they can pack those, too.
We did that last year, didn't we? We had a whole, I forget the whole process we went through, but we heard from both sides, and the board didn't have the will to do anything different.
Any direction? Anybody wants to support the?
My only question is if.
Because, I mean, I can answer her letter. Jason can answer it.
I mean, I am happy, I am happy to write back and explain, based on the the conversations of over the past two years in the board's review, that their senses, you're you're still where you were when you last had this conversation, and, you know, you're sensitive to the concerns and individual circumstances, but don't see a overall ordinance fitting all of the issues and interests in town right now.
How, why would we not put it on a warrant?
That's where we were last year.
Me personally, I don't see a problem, but I'm not living where this person's living.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Look at the, if you look at that log.
Pretty close. Says Talon Hall, Talon Road.
I'm telling you, when I, when I looked at the log, the log that the log that they keep, it's, I can assure you that I didn't hear any of what was in that log, with probably the exception of the Fourth of July and on January first.
Yeah.
Every once in a while, you'll hear a stray one, but no means is it a problem, you know? So I hear more guns than I do fireworks.
Yeah, me, too.
Oh, I hear guns all the time.
Really?
I've become numb to it. I don't even hear it anymore.
But to me, put it on a warrant article and let the people vote on it and see what happens.
But.
So it's an option that we can do.
Because I I'm, there are two polar, you know, the two sides are polarized, and and I don't, you know, whatever move that we make, I not going to please everyone.
And I, I guess I could also say, remember, we diverted down the, um, noise path as well, at, at least one year, we looked at this still, because there was a concern of, okay, if it's fireworks, or is it all other, all other noises? And so, we tried, we, we, we explored that path for a little bit and also realized that that was getting to be.
Right. I mean, you know, on, on the 4th of July, is that enforceable? You know what I mean? You gotta look at it if it's enforceable. I, I.
I remember, I remember having a discussion with the chief about this, and as he says, when the calls come in, they answer the calls.
Right.
But unfortunately, if there's only two offices on, it, it's more often than not the first priority. It, it can be an hour later when they get there, and it's long since over. So, it's one of those things about living in a small town.
Myself, I just say, we, we direct Jason to reply back to the letter, or Steve, you know, Jim, and just.
Doesn't matter.
That's myself, but.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and if it comes up, it's, y, y, you know, people are doing it illegally, you know what I mean? It's not like they're, you know, I mean, the state allows them.
Hey, if this is, if this is a group of citizens against fireworks, I mean, they can do a petition warrant article.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that should be mentioned to the.
Yeah, and that's, I, you know, my response back would be recommending again, recommending that option, um, saying that they can certainly work with the town to structure that language. I mean, this is what we tell everybody, and I mean, I've told everybody, you know, "We're here to help you write the language so it's enforceable." You bet, we may all disagree with it, but our job on a citizen warrant is to get that warrant in the best possible shape. And to kind of give the approximate timeframe as well, so they would know, okay, you know, "We're looking for these in mid-January. They have to be in generally the second week of January," or whatever the timeframe is. Is that, you're comfortable with that direction, then?
Works.
You are?
For everybody else?
We're good.
Okay. I'll send something of that effect. Very few informational items up there this week. As you may have read in the newspaper, I was on vacation. Um, yeah. The, uh, only, the only other thing that I'd note is, um, we did get a note today, uh, you know, we've been working with, um, the law firm of Upton and Hatfield, where it's been working with a group of Avatar clients who have been sued now for multiple years from Fairpoint. Um, our main, um, attorney at Upton and Hatfield is leaving that firm, so Gary from Avatar recommends keeping the Avatar clients together as a group, which has made a lot of sense for us so far, and moving that work to, to move to work with Jay Whitelaw, who is at Mitchell Municipal Group. So, I think it's a great, it's very convenient for us. And, so, we're gonna proceed in that direction. Jay is an outstanding choice, and.
I've gotten some free advice from Jay on the Fairpoint thing when I've called up to the office and happened to get Jay on the phone.
Very competent.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Just now, we'll move to other items that we didn't have any. Selectmen reports. Does any selectman have any reports?
I do.
Okay.
I attended the first conservation committee meeting last Thursday night, and, um, items that they're talking, one of them, um, they had a presentation from a forester who offered forest management services for town-owned properties. Um, and I, in a previous life, I offered to, um, get them the information that, that we had. You know, I said, suggested that they have to go out for proposals, et cetera, and, you know, get, make sure that, uh, the, um, proposal, you know, spells out exactly what the forester will do, you know, where the proceeds go, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I'm, I've gotten some information from Northwood, and I'm getting some more, because we, uh, up there, they have been doing it for quite a while. So, they're nice enough to send me. Um, also, apparently, there's EPA and, um, Environmental Protection, I believe, drafted a new rule to clarify an existing Supreme Court decision on navigable waters. So, they're working through that. Um, they don't know how Congress is gonna react to that, but, uh, it's quite a complicated issue, so I, I learned something the other night. It was a good meeting, so, that's all.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question dealing with conservation.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, at the Moors Falls property, the chain that was used to try and barricade people from going down to the river.
Mm-hmm.
Has been replaced by a gate on two posts.
Yes.
That has decreased the opening of the available space where emergency vehicles would go. Has anybody checked that that's wide enough now to fit a fire truck or whatever's gonna get down there?
Uh, I believe that it's been checked. Um, I know they, they, the conversation between, with the high, with the road agent was also about the key, the appropriate key to get into that space. So, um, I think it's a full vehicle with. I'll confirm with him and see.
Okay, I, um, I attended the, there's really not a name for it yet, but the land over on Page and Cutler, behind Page and adjacent to Cutler. Uh, Rick Shabno happens to be the owner of that.
That came up, but I wasn't sure.
And in that meeting, the discussions have been happening of what to do with it, what type of uses the town would need, whether it be ball fields, other recreational uses. So, the first meeting we had, we went over some possible uses, like, um, access from Albuquerque or slash the bike path to get over there if this becomes a recreational piece of property. Um, what type of fields would be there, and some of the things that came up was like a potential like pond and a walking area, picnic area, things like that. So, I was gonna reach out to the recreation department, which, do they have a meeting tomorrow?
Uh, nope.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'll make sure I get that email out tonight. If you could please make sure that they talk about it. Because what we're trying to do is get the recreations feedback as far as what they may feel we need as you, in fields or anything, any type of space.
They have been talking about lack of fields. They're stressing out, they're, they're, they're stressing the limited baseball fields you have today.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's been discussions around how we can get some more baseball fields. So, I did mention that, that it was being discussed, though.
Okay. Well, I'll send out an email tonight about some of the things and all, and the next meeting for that is on June 17th. Rick was at the last meeting, and he plans on continuing being at these meetings because he wants to see this get worked through. So.
Did that citizen, by the way, attend?
Yes. The citizen that is, um, that.
Yes.
Board is the property.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Yep. So, that's where we're going with that. Hopefully, we can get that moving forward for him because he wants to make that donation to the town, and it's all good. Anything else? Anyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just as a, a notice to the selectmen, I will be out of town commencing tomorrow morning bright and early, and will not be returning till Saturday late. I gotta go down to the Berkshires.
You called Bull Lake out of town?
Excuse me?
You called Bull Lake out of town?
That's the, he's at Berkshires.
He's at Berkshires, yeah, I, you know. If you'd like some recommendations.
You should take, you should take Jason out to lunch those days.
They can do a debrief.
The chairman will move to adjourn before we get into.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I do. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. We are now adjourned at seven oh three. Have a good night, everybody, and we'll see you in two weeks.